This is our May ninth meeting, regular meeting. And I'd like to start with a roll call.
Director Keno Fike.
Not here yet.
Director Duggan.
Here.
Director Goff.
Here.
Here.
President.
Yes. I'm gonna make a change in the order of the agenda and allow the chief and his officers to be sworn in. Chief, if you wanna take center stage.
How are we good? Can everybody hear me? Good evening. It's a special day for us here in Kensington. I welcome all the family and friends who've come out today. It's a great thing. Good evening, members of the board, General Manager Aranda, officers, and everybody in the general public who's watching this evening. Tonight, it is my honor and privilege to introduce to you four exceptional individuals who have chosen to get to dedicate themselves to serving our community as members of the Kensington Police Department. But before I do so, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to Sergeant Amit Nath, Sergeant Brian Landy, Jason Haynes, and Officer Jose Fajardo. Three of those four are sitting in the audience today, and without them, we wouldn't be here. They have done everything from recruit to interview to make recommendations and more recommendations, and we've had some, some arguments in the past about some of the candidates that are qualified, and I will say that our rate of hiring is pretty low. And this is the result, the most qualified of all the applicants. Their tireless efforts, attention to detail, and unwavering commitment during the hiring process have been instrumental in bringing us to this moment. Without their dedication, we wouldn't be here tonight, celebrating the addition of these outstanding officers. Each of the officers we're welcoming tonight has embraced this profession not just as a job but a calling, a commitment to uphold the law, protect the public, and fulfill all the responsibilities of a 21st century police officer. They've made promises to themselves, their families, and our community to serve with an integrity, compassion, and courage. As they take their oath of office, it's only fitting that we involve their loved ones in this special moment. I'll be inviting a family member or friend or colleague to pin each individual officer's badge, symbolizing the trust and support they have behind them as they embark on this noble journey of service. So without further ado, please join me in welcoming our newest members of the Kensington Police Department. Let's give them a round of applause as they step forward to uphold the values and protect the safety of our community. I'm gonna read a quick bio on each officer. Far left over here, Police Officer Vijay Thoda. Officer Thoda is a Bay Area native who grew up in Berkeley. He is of Indian American descent and fluent in Telugu and spoken and written, both spoken and written. With over thirteen years of experience, Vijay has actively participated in the management of his family's restaurant in Stockton, where he contributed to delivering authentic Indian cuisine to patrons. Vijay holds a certification in medical assisting and an associate's degree in criminal justice from Carrington College. Currently, he is dedicated to advancing his education and aims to acquire a bachelor's degree in the field. Graduating from the San Joaquin Delta College Basic Police Officer Academy, Vijay commenced his career with the city of Stockton before transitioning to the Kensington Police Department. He completed the Kensington Police Department Field Training Program and presently serves as, serves solo patrol during a graveyard shift on Thursdays through Saturdays. In addition to his professional commitments, Vijay finds fulfillment in his marriage and is enthusiastic about his role with the District of Kensington. He particularly values the community spirit camaraderie among colleagues and favorable weather conditions. Okay, I have to apologize, it's the worst year of allergies I've ever had in my life, and I'm hopped up on so much allergy medication, but it's getting me. Appreciate it. Police Officer Harjot Gill. Harjot Gill is a native of the Central Valley and was raised in Reading. As an individual of an Indian American heritage, Harjot is fluent in Punjabi. Over the past five years, Harjot has played an integral role in managing and operating various businesses owned by his family in the Central Valley. Harjot graduated from Merced High School and pursued studies in psychology at Shasta College. His educational journey continues as he plans to enroll in the California Coast University to pursue a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Having relocated to Modesto in 2021, Harjot completed the San Joaquin Delta College Basic Peace Officer Academy. He commenced his law enforcement career with the Gustine Police Department before joining the Kensington Police Department. Harjot successfully completed the Kensington Police Department Lateral Field Training Program and is currently engaged in solo patrol duties during the graveyard shift on Sundays through Tuesdays. You can find him, just speed through the neighborhood and he'll find you. Harjot finds fulfillment in serving the District of Kensington, emphasizing his appreciation for community interaction during patrols, including befriending community pets. He values the collaborative atmosphere among colleagues and the provision of modern equipment and tools to enhance his effectiveness on duty. Mr. De Santiago. It's our newest member, Police Officer Jesse De Santiago. Officer De Santiago hails from the Bay Area, specifically Newark. He is of Mexican-American descent and is fluent in Spanish. Jesse's educational journey commenced at a loanee college in Fremont, where he earned two associate's degrees in administration of justice and social sciences. He furthered his studies at San Jose State University, graduating with a bachelor's degree in justice studies and a minor in human rights. During his college years, Jesse gained over ten years' experience in the loss prevention field, collaborating with various law enforcement agencies across the Bay Area. In 2023, he graduated from the Alameda County Sheriff's Office Regional Training Center's Basic Police Academy. Jesse's career path led him to the Menlo Park Police Department before joining the Kensington Police Department. Jesse is committed to supporting his wife as she pursues her master's degree and teaching credentials. He also plans to pursue his own master's degree soon. Jesse is a devoted father to a seven-year-old daughter and an eleven-year-old son, actively participating in their extracurricular activities. In his leisure time, he enjoys exploring dining experiences with his wife. And last but not least, this is Reserve Officer Michael Trinati. Michael was born in the Philippines and raised in Concord, California, fluent in Tagalog. Michael feels honored to serve as a reserve officer with the Kensington Police Department. Michael attended Ignatio Valley High School and obtained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Kaplan University. Currently, he serves as campus supervisor at a Bay Area high school while managing his own business ventures. His journey in law enforcement began in 2008 as a volunteer in police services with the Concord Police Department. He later transitioned to serve as a reserve police officer with the San Francisco Police Department, accumulating a decade of experience in patrol assignments, special events, and specialized units such as the sexual assault unit and financial crimes unit. Michael is married with three children and enjoys the close-knit community atmosphere of Kensington. He appreciates the unwavering support for the Kensington Police Department, the amiable work environment, and the provision of state-of-the-art equipment and programs that enhance efficiency in policing duties. Let's get this party started. All right, step forward. All of you, all at once. Yeah, we're gonna do, we're gonna do one shot here. All right. I'm gonna say aye, and then you state your name. Start off there, okay? This is the twelve-pause edition. I state your name. Raise your right hand. Sorry. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter as a police officer for the Special District of Kensington. All right. Don't go anywhere, young man. Let me get this, let me get your sheet out. Right in the back, right where you should be. All right. Pinning Officer Thoda's badge tonight will be his wife, Charmela. I see you smiling over there. Guy's always smiling. All right, Officer Harjot Gill. Pinning his badge will be his cousin, who's a Berkeley police officer, Taren. All right. Congratulations. It's your box. All right. Mr. De Santiago. All right, pinning Officer De Santiago's badge tonight is his wife, Jasmine. And kids and family. Last but definitely not least, Sarah. Reserve Officer Michael Trinati. Pinning Michael's badge tonight will be his wife, Michelle. This is a special badge with a band on the top that says Reserve. You can just let it hang. There you go. Welcome aboard. I would just request just a few minutes so the family and friends can take photographs.
Right, yeah. They'll be taking photographs in the back, and we'll take a few minutes and relax. And thank you, officers, all.
He's so happy to be, get some time. I know.
Yeah, so the family can take their photos now, and then we'll get the court members
To the regular business. We've had roll, so I'll open it up to comments on items not on the agenda. If anyone in the audience has any comments, feel free to come up to the podium. Having seen none, is there anyone on the Zoom call? I don't see one either. Okay. All right, no comments from either. Let's move into the next item in business. We have a consent calendar which includes the minutes. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes at all? Yes? No? Sylvia? No? Okay. I was gonna, okay, I was gonna do both and then, but we'll have a motion on the minutes to approve them, to hear a motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
You can just call for the, uh, call for the ayes and nos.
Okay. Well, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No nos. Second item. Yes.
So the board just approved both the minutes of the special and regular meeting and then the April bills paid. I just want to point out.
Well, let me stop you there then, because I don't think we addressed the, the bills paid yet.
We, we, we.
That was my, well, let me back up. That was my point, because I, and I'll ask Sarah with regard to the financials.
Yeah, I don't have to abstain anymore.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Now I can.
Now you're good to go.
What I wanted to bring to the attention of the board in regard to our financials is the, sometimes when our meeting falls the early part, because it's the second week, we just cannot generate the financial statements in time for this board meeting. The feeling in talking to Idi Bailey is that as we fully pull away from the county, we may be able to meet those, that deadline much better, but the county doesn't even make their statements available until, what's today, Wednesday, on Monday, two days ago. So we just can't do it that quick. But what I also wanted to bring to the attention of the board from a financial standpoint is we are making progress, and it has been interesting with the county. If you looked in the board packet, you will see that there was a large sum of money deposited that's basically what the county considers to be one of their big sweeps, which would be April. Moving forward, we'll get another sweep as they close out the fiscal year. We're not expecting much money. And then after that, we will not see additional monies from our property tax revenues and our assessments until substantial monies until December. So I feel comfortable informing you that we do have enough cash, and this is besides the 1.5 million that's in the class savings account. We do have enough cash to sustain us as we continue to receive these checks from the county instead of the draws that the county used to do.
That, that county deposit, if you will, is not, it's not reflected in the financials that you show here.
It will, that's correct, and that was another reason we wanted to get all the books. Our financials were reflecting the draws and not the actual money. So Idi Bailey's gotta go back and reconcile all that so that our next financial statements will show the actual revenues we received, not the draws. And I don't wanna scare anyone, because we're not expecting any changes to what you've seen in the revenue we've received. It's just gonna be actual money in our account as opposed to, and actual money received as opposed to the county's statements of saying how much money we could draw off of.
All right. Guess everyone understands all that. Moving on to the budget for this coming fiscal year, starting July 1, and I'll let our general manager update us.
Okay. You have in front of you as part of the board packet a summary of our overall budget, operating budget, each fund, and some history involved, an organizational chart, and my written description of, of the budget. I, I think it's important for the board to understand, because I, I've received at least one email that this is an operating budget that is being presented to the board and to the people in Kensington. Somewhat of what we discussed a little bit in our strategic planning session is, is more of the audit and CPA information that goes with long-term projections on pension liability, for example, and other loans and money that the district has taken out. So I, I think it's important for everyone to understand that for a discussion on that, and I, I felt comfortable that we're gonna have a better understanding of that long-term view of our financial situation from the standpoint of money borrowed, money owed to CalPERS and such, when Dmitry of Ridgeline produces his report. And we probably will want to dovetail that in with a better understanding with our audit as this fiscal year ends of how the CalPERS, year to year. as this fiscal year ends of how the CalPERS year to year affects not only our agency, but agencies throughout the state of California. That's not what we're talking about in, in the budget here. The budget here is based on myself and the chief looking at what our operational costs are. And the, probably a couple of big issues that, um, need to be given some consideration is if you look on the general fund line item, where it says consulting. I budgeted a hundred thousand. And that was based on what we looked at as an estimate for what you as a board approved for some work, preliminary work on the, um, on the police building. I'm going to have to bring that information back to the board because I just received a quote from Alan Crop that is substantially more than his original estimate. So we're going to need to talk more about how we want to move forward and also with Cusenberry, what we want to do. Um, I'm, I'm not trying to mix two different issues here. I'm just using that as an example, how our budget is a budget, but it's always going to have to be some flexibility to it. The, the positive thing that I believe both in the general fund, in the park fund and in the police fund is the fact that, um, we, we've really are starting to build a history of where our costs are. And in this budget this year, especially in the police department, the chief's trying to be more specific in the line item, um, notations so that we can track things better. But we're at a point where I'm starting to feel comfortable, um, in not just accepting, um, costs and, and putting out fires, but I, I'll give you an example. Um, we're trying to check on Comcast. We're, we're gonna, and what we're paying that bill for. A lot of these bills we've been paying were existent under some contracts, um, a number of years ago. So we're going to continue to look at ways to cut costs and, and use the, the money that's received in the best way possible. In the police budget, the office, the officer salaries does reflect an additional officer that we've spoken about. Um, and we feel, um, comfortable with the work that the chief did and also Idy Bailey. They, they produce a separate spreadsheet because it's very cumbersome, um, how you calculate all the costs for your police officers and their benefits. So we feel comfortable with that. Uh, I can tell you right now, the chief and I have had discussions and we're already whittling on this budget a little bit. Um, the goal here, if you look at the summary, the goal here is to break even and, or maybe even do a little bit better. And, and I'm confident that we'll meet that goal by the June board meeting. Parks is pretty much historic, both for the general fund, the police fund and the parks fund. There are no capital projects projected. And that's not because of the financial situation of the district. That's because no one had any in mind proposed as of yet. Um, we are paying off the lease on the vehicle fleet. Um, that's, that's budgeted. Uh, we pay the, uh, community center loan, that's budgeted. We pay the pension obligation bond, that's budgeted. But as far as capital purchases, as I'm speaking right now, we don't have any to propose to the board. So we didn't incorporate anything in the budget for that purpose. The waste management, um, budget is a little, um, confusing. And I, I want to spend a little bit of time on explaining two separate things. One is we've been approved, as the board may recall, for a $75,000 grant. If we get the money, we're going to spend the money. So it's really a pass through. Take the 75,000, use the 75,000. But part of that 75,000, we're allowed to allocate to administrative costs to oversee that grant. So that'll all be captured. The second item that's important is under legal, where it says waste management, the 40,000 is an estimate that I came up with to have a consultant do the franchise fee study and to do, um, the cost of service study as well. What? I wanted to talk to the board about specifically is the Waste Management Program Administration. I don't know if you recall this or not, but when this, when the last year's fiscal year budget was presented in May and June of last year, I explained to the board that it's very typical for districts to take a percentage of their general operating costs and share that over what other operations are, are essentially using those costs. So we used 10% of the administrative costs last year. I'm a little concerned, first of all, the 69,000 doesn't reflect 10% of the, um, administrative cost. And, and I, I didn't change it because this is what I need a little bit of direction on. My recommendation would be to still do the 10% less two important line items in the general fund. One is legal and the other is consulting. And the reason is waste management has their own legal line item and they have their own consulting. So that's a double dip to me. So if the, if the, if that makes sense to the board, we will reflect the proper amount of the program administration costs. Now, when you reflect that cost, whatever it might end up being, let's say it's 50,000. At the end of the year, when you do a true-up, whatever the actual cost is, waste management fund is going to get dinged for that. And the revenue is going to go to a credit to the administration, the general fund. That'll help offset our general fund cost. Any questions on that? Any questions on the budget?
As far as how you allocate that 10% on the waste management, are you? When you say 10%, 10% of administrative costs or 10% of the, let's say the salaries of the staff, which is generally, at least my experience in working for the state, it was to pay towards the salary, uh, of this case, personnel or budgets or human resources. Um, so that's my question.
Yeah, but my, my recommendation is all of the administrative costs, line items, except for the two I mentioned. And the reason I'm stating that is, let's just take, um, uh, office supplies. I mean theoretically, some, some of those office supplies go toward our solid waste operations and, and what I do. Um, the election, why wouldn't, um, solid waste bear some of those costs instead of just administration? But that's a board, really that's a board decision. If, if you want to just take the 292,000 that's part of the proposed salary and benefits and take 10% of that, that's, that's fine too. Um, that's a call that you need to make.
Anyone have any thoughts about that?
I want to make sure I understand. So what you're saying is, um, how much of our general fund do we want to spread around to all the quote unquote, other departments? And so what you first proposed is to, um, only allocate, uh, nothing more than what is in the, uh, solid waste contract because this contract has a certain amount of legal and consulting already spelled out?
No, I don't think so. Let, let me try explaining this again. Um, in the past, solid waste, the fun, has been a standalone in its cost and pass-throughs. But the franchise fees have gone toward the general fund. We're not doing that anymore. We've all agreed the franchise fees are going to be dedicated toward solid waste. But with that said, there's still costs involved in solid waste operations that administration bears. There's no doubt about the fact that I spend time, Linnell spends time, Rosa spends time on solid waste operations. The question I think that's being raised by the board president is when you look at the other line items in the general fund, which we're saying has, um, 466,000. Now, if you took out the 100,000 of consulting, you're at 36, 366,000, right? Actually, total expenses is 758,000, sorry.
Right.
So if you took out 100,000 of that, it would be 658,000. That's real close to what we budgeted for this current fiscal year of 10% of the overall cost. And that would be transfer at the end of the year. But it's a board call on whether you want to just eliminate consulting and legal or you want to just make the 10% cost salaries and benefits only.
Sorry, how did?
Go ahead.
How did you arrive at the 10% being the number?
How did I arrive? In, in, in discussions with Cindy from Idy Bailey, um, and in my past history of, of doing these types of shared, we, we looked, I, I did a quick overview based on my experience of what I've been doing with solid waste and looking at what the co, I mean, when, when you look at, um, workers' compensation, when you look at liability insurance, when you, when you look at our copier contract, I, you know, there, there's some cost involved when we do, um, items for solid waste. And, and I, I, you know, when I first walked in the door here, I got the feeling that, oh, solid waste is something we don't, we don't do anything. We just sit here and take the franchise fees. That is not accurate at all. There is time and energy and supply spent on solid waste work.
With that explanation, I, I think it's perfectly acceptable to spread that among all the categories. In fact, that's kind of how we got to fund accounting. That was the whole point. And so I think that's correct. And I think you're right. The perception had been that, oh, it's just a very separate piece because it's a contract, but it takes a lot more than, there is work involved. So I, I would, I would agree with spreading that out over the, the, the general fund.
Sorry, and Director Hussai, when you say spread it, are you talking about the 10%?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's where I was leaning and what makes more sense. Also, I think it would be a mistake to completely remove those line items from the general fund um, for future purposes. I, I don't know what else we might be doing, but it, it seems clearer and cleaner to have the 10%. So I, I think that, um, extends, and I have some other questions. Should I ask them now or wait? Do you want to wrap this thing up?
Let's wrap this.
Okay.
Cass, I think you have a.
I was just going to agree that it should be proportionate across all the categories.
Well, parks and police bear cost. If you look at the line items for the, each of those departments, they are bearing those costs. Not mine necessarily, but there is salaries and benefits in both their, those departments. That's why, that's why I targeted solid waste for this.
Yeah, a couple of points, um, 10% is actually a low percentage on generally, the state. It's, when I was there, it's around 30 to 35% that gets taken and put into all the support units that, uh, are covered. I guess I'm, I'm comfortable with spreading it across. I probably could argue that there are some of these activities like board continuing education is not necessarily, uh, the type of, you know, spread, but uh, I'll accept the fact that it's, it's easy to just spread it over all of it with the exceptions of the two legal and consulting that you, um, brought up. You had.
I was going to say something else. Okay, I, I was, I just wanted to also, uh, remind the board that, um, based on your approval tonight, Linnell will place the ads notifying people that we will have a public hearing in June at six o'clock on the budget. And you will also, and I'm going to make a promise to you, much more in advance than what happened this week, have a revised budget with a lot of explanations to it.
Um, so first question, I just have two. Um, the, the, uh, the additional police salary that was included, is that associated with this empty white circle? Or can you get more?
No, if you, if you look on the organizational chart at the bottom where it says officers.
Yes.
The prior organization chart had three and two.
Okay.
Now we have three and three. The blank box is a position that, um, the chief and I, the chief has been talking about, but it's not an approved position and we're in no position to propose that.
Okay. Um, then my next question was for under legal and the general fund.
Yeah.
I noticed, um, I just want to make sure you, you feel comfortable. It seems low, but I want to make sure you feel comfortable. I know we are going in the right direction, but yeah.
And I meant to address that, so thank you. I do feel comfortable based on the circumstances that I'm seeing from two standpoints. One is that the Denali case was thrown, thrown out and we're done with it. It's closed. Um, second is the fact that this board has become, I think, more comfortable with agendas such as tonight, where we do not legally, we do not need legal counsel representation. Um, so yeah, I am comfortable. Um, the, if you go back and look at what we've spent this year, probably CalPERS and public records are the two big dollar amounts. Um, I'm hoping that we're wrapping up the CalPERS issues um, and the public records. Um, Linnell and I were just talking about this before the meeting started. Jason is unbelievably knowledgeable that I believe we're going to save a significant amount of money because of his knowledge. Um, I just saw, I was a CC on someone that requested something. And I just loved the way he, he, he quotes the government code. He quoted the police, you know, he, he quoted things and he gave an answer to the person on what they were asking for. You can't ask for more than that. So, and I, and I have enough confidence in both, um, uh, Jason and the chief that if, if, if a, if a public records request arises and there is a concern, we will get legal help. But if it's police related, that's going to be a line item for the police department on legal. So what we're looking at on my general fund is, is probably, and hopefully minimized by the items I just said, I hope are going away. I, I'm hesitant sometimes because I've said that before and it doesn't happen. The, the other thing, which you, by asking that question, I want to also let the board know the Idy Bailey agreement that we're wrapping up this year. I said that it was our goal and hope that we could reduce the contract. We're not. And what happened was, and it was very beneficial to the district. This fiscal year, we signed an agreement that had a not to exceed monthly amount. But when you start looking at the hourly billing, that actually Idy Bailey wasn't supposed to send me, but they did. We were saving a ton of money based on what they're, they did for us this past year. They can't do that again. So that's why there's an increase in that line item. What I'm very hopeful is that we're going to still be able to reduce. What I'm very hopeful is that we're going to still be able to reduce some of the items, some of the functions that ID Bailey does, namely the payroll. The payroll here is just ridiculous in how much time and effort it takes and how many people are involved. We're hoping that the bridge that you approved is going to be in operation, hopefully in June, but we're really shooting for, to be in full operation in, in July. And, and Cass, I see you looking at me with a puzzle. The, the payroll is complicated because of all the caveats that different officers have. The overtime, the percent of benefits they get for various education and such. So it's, it's, it's difficult. And Karn gets it. We basically have been having someone double check the work. ID Bailey is still responsible for seeing that CalPERS is pop properly paid and that our taxes are properly paid. And that's not going to go away. We still need that help. But if we can reduce the payroll from the standpoint of how much man hours are spent on looking at it, I think we'll, we'll be in, in decent shape. But I wanted to bring that to your attention as well.
I, I did. Sure. I wanted to know with the extra officer, will we eliminate solo patrols, especially in those, in the graveyard shift?
Good evening. That is the plan with the 10th officer. To have two, two officer units splitting the week in one car. That's the, that's the plan.
When you say 10th officer, are you counting yourself?
No. Oh, yes, I apologize. Good Lord, but I can't do that job nowadays. I'm too old and fat.
But you are in that number.
Yeah, I am in that number. Yeah, the 10th officer would absolutely get deposited right into graveyard and work in one car with two officers.
Certainly, we're at nine and you want to hire one more, which.
Well, we'll be, we will be at nine, July 1st. That reserve officer that you saw gives 16 hours to the district at no cost to the district. My plan is to get two more of those, just like him.
How does that work?
Magic. There's another one sitting there in the audience, Mike Logan. He puts in 30 hours. Sometimes, ah, we sometimes have to throw him out of the PD, but he volunteers a lot of time.
But the reserve officer?
Michael Trinotti.
How come they are not paid?
Ah, because they are willing to do this job, but they are not willing to do it full-time. They have other obligations. I think I mentioned in the, his introduction that he has business ventures and does other things. He works, has another job at a school, but prefers to volunteer his time as a reserve police officer.
Is it so he can build up a resume and maybe get a job as a police officer? What are they gaining?
Everybody has their own reasons. Sometimes they do it for the love of the job. And other times there's some additional benefits. They get to keep their post certificate up to date. They don't have to go back to a police academy. So we like, we, we have a minimum amount of hours that they can work. And if you're going to be reserve in Kensington, those hours are 16. He is scheduled for 16 hours and we put him on graveyard.
16 a month or a week?
16 a month. Mandatory. Sometimes they do 30 or 40.
Yeah, one more question. Under chief of police, it says consultant PT. Well, you don't have that. Who's that?
That was Jason. Since moved out of that position and now he is consulting for the entire district for, for everything. I think you might be looking at an old work chart.
So right, go ahead Sylvia.
The current one, then have him reporting to both the GM and the chief of police?
You bet. He serves. He serves as a liaison for both the general manager. I know he works closely with Lanell on public records act requests and anything else the district would like him to do. I wouldn't ask Jason as a police consultant, just for as an example, to go after a FEMA grant. But you guys are very interested in that. And I think that he's got the right skills and the connections to do stuff like that for you.
So right now we have, we're, we're authorized, or you're authorized with 10 positions.
Yes, sir.
Two of which are vacant, one patrol officer or an officer and the lieutenant's position is, is vacant at the present time?
Yes, I, there will be a, a shift right around August. And in August, we will have nine sworn police officers. That includes me. I cannot tell you when I will get the 10th officer.
That ninth officer will be a sergeant or be a line officer?
He is a sergeant from the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Department.
And this is back to, to David. The budget for the salaries of the police officers, that assumes fully filled, that is, all the positions are filled and they're costed that way, correct?
Yeah, the, the chief and I, we both agree that, I, I guess I'm going to use the word, let's be conservative. So that's your
Right.
full schedule of cost. And just the fact that the, the other line officer may not come on board until August, September, October. You, you're obviously not expending that share of that money.
Right, but that's the appropriate way to do it.
Yes, it is.
Always been my experience and I think others probably agree with that. Just a couple of other quick questions. The CalPERS officer share actually shows a, and this is just a small amount, maybe I'm nitpicking, but it shows a 5,000 plus for this year. And I, I didn't think we were providing any for the CalPERS officers. If you look at the CalPERS, it's 57, 528, excuse me.
District share?
Yeah, from, well, talks, no, the, the officer's share. It says for this present fiscal year, we have
Oh.
invited, I, I, I don't think that's correct.
No.
Okay.
Oh, maybe they, I, I'm going to have to find out why it shows. It looks like it was a, a reflection of an adjustment from the prior fiscal year.
Yeah, it was, right. It looked like something happened prior fiscal year.
Okay, got it.
Couple of the, I used to know what the acronym SLESF stood for, but I don't anymore. But we have 20, 200,000 for this year and yet we haven't received anything for this fiscal year?
Now, that's where these adjustments are. If you, if you look at our, our financials, our profit and loss statements, we had a lump sum, a lumped category that incorporated the SLESF money. And I think it was also the grant money that was in that. And we've sep, we, we, we're trying to separate things. And it's really important that the SLESF money be specifically designated. Now Karn can give you, if you, if you remind me, I can share with you. I don't, I didn't bring the
No, that's fine.
financial statement, but I can share with you that number. And it doesn't mean anything because it's, it's money, it's revenue from a number of different sources. So that's why it didn't get transferred over to the current year-to-date. But we are at around that dollar amount. We're, we're going to, I, I, my recollection is we're going to match that 195.
Okay. And one last thing, and then I'll turn to Sylvia. And again, nitpicking and FY '23 pension obligation bond payment, we show nothing, but I'm assuming we made it.
I wasn't here.
Good reasoning.
But I think we would have heard from
We would have.
our bank friends. I will tell you though, the when I first got here, they were frustrated because they were not getting responses. So we, we've straightened all that out.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're, we're obligated to pay twice a year and
That's correct. We're doing that.
Sylvia, Heather.
Two quick questions, I hope. One, I just wanted to know about the rec building, how we are doing toward expending the monies we did receive this year for, I think they may have all been expended, but I wanted to double check.
Now, are you speaking about the restricted money for the capital?
Yes.
That is sitting in class under a separate account earning interest and we have not expended any of that money.
Which means we have work to do on the building.
Which means what?
We have work to do.
Um, we, improvements to make on the building? Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I think we should just keep that in mind. And then I wanted us to just check in with either you or the chief about live scan. I know we, you know, got that up and running, wondering, you know, what that's doing for us? If we're getting enough, if we need to publicize that more or anything?
Yes, Jason will be handling that. There is a room, I apologize. There is a room in the police department that we designed and designated for that machine. So the public could go into the room without having to come back into the police department. That room is still occupied by the fire district.
Oh, that's.
And we were, we're going to move that machine into there. You can, we will take photographic ID, live scan, and that'll be a service that'll be handled in the lobby.
Have we been doing much this year with it at all?
Not at all.
We have quite a bit of applicants.
Oh, for the applicant, it's live scan is predominantly with the recruitment efforts.
Absolutely.
I think of it for schools and for, you know, if you want to be a volunteer, you have to sometimes go through.
Yes, that is true. We plan on providing that service a little bit more publicly in the future, but most of the live scanning has been done by applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to tack on, if you look at the line item that says police fees and service charges, there's, I, I'm, I'm not saying it's ever going to be a big line item, but there's room for growth based on what you're asking.
Yeah.
Alex?
Sorry, I want to, Director Hussain, I want to go back to your first question around the building and improvements. So are you indicating that we should include some capital line items for basically year '25?
Well, the, the money is there and the money will, will, because of the contract, that will be coming. What I'm concerned about is that we make sure that we work with them to, to spend it, to make the improvements we need to do on the building. There's a lot and we did some early on when we were negotiating the contract. And I, I don't know what sort of next in line. And I think some of it's also just the capacity to kind of get it up and running and, you know, hiring the contractors and all. But I am concerned that we live up to our obligation and it's our asset. It always was our asset. And in the time that it was triple net lease, it really didn't get the attention it needed from the tenant as part of the triple net agreement. Now we've gotten it back and, you know, we have to take care of it. So we could talk about that in more detail. I just wanted to know whether we had expended the entire amount yet for this year. If we haven't, we're going to be getting, you know, more coming in and we should be planning. But it's part of that, not, yeah, that's the well, no, because it's separate, I mean, it's, it doesn't really have to be because the money is in, I mean, you could explain this better. That we don't need to maybe, it's accounted for differently. I'll let the general manager talk.
We, we put it in a, a sub savings account. So it's earning its own interest and it's very trackable. But in conjunction with what we're talking about here, two things. One is I check with Jenny on a regular basis, everything working in the building, any problems, blah, 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 blah. The second is my, not my guess, my knowledge tells me that when we need something, it's, it's probably going to be more than 30,000. So I was looking at building that account up. At the same time, I've tried to reach out and let's say, that's why I was asking you about heat pumps. If, if we're going to retrofit the, the rec building with new heat, I think it's just heat in that building. If there's grants out there or some kind of discounts that you get, tax credits, we're going to try to tie that in conjunction with money spent.
But right now there's no outstanding list of projects. We had that, we had the report. We made some of those improvements that were extremely urgent. And there's nothing else on the list that we need to take care of right now.
No, and the, the probably the two things that will come up is the heat pumps and the roofing.
Yeah.
And I would, I would also add seismic to that because I think it needs to be retrofitted from a seismic standpoint. That money that, no, 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 I, I understand that. And I think we should be thinking about a broader plan to deal with these issues in one fell swoop with regard to the, that building. My assumption also is that that money that we're receiving from KCC is going into a reserve account. And a reserve account that is essentially a lockbox that we've agreed that cannot be touched unless the board decides differently.
Correct. I'm, I'm not, I will not spend that money without coming to the board. So there's documentation, not only for this board, but for the KCC board.
Correct. A question on CalPERS payment. I know in the past, and maybe Sylvia can correct me if I'm wrong in this. If we paid early, we would get a, a break on our required payment. And I would want us to look into that because I think we did that in the past. And so, okay. And I think, I think maybe that was the last thing I had. Yeah, well, yes, Sarah, go ahead.
I have to hear you.
Sorry. What is the sort of big picture costs, savings or not, without a finance director role and using ID Bailey and Karn to fulfill, you know, all of those functions? I know last year ID Bailey gave us a deal, so maybe that's not representative of what it would be on going forward. But say for 2025, are we, is it still a, a savings compared to having a full-time or a staff position and?
Yeah, that's a good question. It probably still is a savings, but probably more importantly is this district and myself, we need to have a comfort level of establishing some consistency and I, I can't afford to try to hire a finance manager and then find out it's a failure. And that may sound real negative to all of you, but the savings that may exist, and I, I'm not sure there is because finance managers in themselves are fairly expensive. I think if you looked hour for hour, I'm not sure there is a savings, to be quite honest with you. And what, what's strange about this district, and it's true for human resources and it's true for finance, is there are certain things we still need to take care of according to the law, according to financial, you know, legal issues. But we're also not this huge organization that demands, you know, a staff of three financial people. And I'm not sure it even demands a staff of one full-time financial person. And if they're skilled as, in a CPA role, they're going to be expensive.
Actually, and that has to do with OPEB. And for anyone who doesn't know the acronym, it's the other employment benefits such as medical. I, I know we have a, a trust fund. And up until a few years ago, we actually contributed to the trust fund to build it up and we stopped. And I, that might be worth looking at and to see if we, if it would be worthwhile to contribute it again. Or whether we can, given our financial situation.
Are you, I'm not aware of any trust fund.
Well, maybe I'll turn to Sylvia again because she's been here on the board longer than I. But we did, we do have a, an OPEB trust fund that I understand.
We, we did at one time. I'm not sure we still do. I'm not sure if the pension obligation bond, bond may have been why we got rid of it. And I, I was not my, I was, I don't know. It's just something I don't know if we still have it and if we aren't funding it, why? Because the, the OPEB, the bond helped a lot with our, with the OPEB, so.
Okay, well, anyways, we can have a discussion offline on that. All right, so we need to make a motion to establish make a motion to establish the, the public hearing notice in the meeting. I'm, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, that.
Trying to move along.
All right.
Anyone in the audience have any comments or questions? Anyone online? I don't see any hands up. Okay. Well, do I hear a motion to approve placing the public hearing notice in the West County Times?
Motion to approve the placement of a notice of public hearing for the month of June in the West County Times to direct staff.
Second.
Okay, do I roll call?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to the hazard mitigation plan. Try to make this quick. I will try to make it quick.
We've discussed this a few times. The county has their own way of doing things. And again, I appreciate President Spath staying on top of that more than I'm able to. And so with that said, what you see is the draft plan from the county and their contractor that impacts Kensington. The purpose for this tonight is we can say we've made it available once again for the public to comment on as well as the board.
Yeah, and the importance of the plan is that if it is approved by Cal, OES, and FEMA, then it allows us to seek FEMA grants. Without a plan, without an approved plan, FEMA will not entertain a grant from us. And the other aspect here is that FEMA expects more from jurisdictions on this plan, 2024 plan, as far as reaching out for public comment and including not only holding public meetings, such as we are tonight on it, but also through social media and, and other ways of reaching the, the public. And so what we've done is we've put it on Nextdoor, we've sent it out to all individuals who receive agendas or notices of meeting agendas. We have it up on our webpage. So, and we take advantage also of the fire district's efforts as well. They have, they have noticed to various constituents the availability of the county plan and our plan, their plan, and all the other jurisdictions planned on the county website. So I think we've done a reasonable amount of effort to reach out to the public. And you may recall that David held a, a hearing, as shall we say, or a discussion of the, of the early action items that we were proposing. If anyone, if board members or anyone in the public has any questions about the action items, and that I think should be really the focus of your attention, take a look at the action items, the ones that were approved back in 2018, which was the last time the plan was approved, and now the four new items. If you have any comments on those, or if you have another item that you want to add to it, we can do it before the, the period is over, the period being at the end of May. And that's when it all is supposed to be completed, and then it goes on to Cal, OES, and on to FEMA. The other aspect is these, these plans can be changed annually if we want to add something to the plan on an annual basis, that can be done. So with that, are there any thoughts? Yes, you have one.
Yes, I found three tiny little corrections or misspellings. And rather than listing them tonight, maybe what I'll do is I'll just send you those in an email.
Just send it to me, that'd be fine.
Almas and stuff.
Right.
And I, I'm really glad that we have the item about the LRAD, the Long Range Acoustic Device. That's great. I wanted to suggest, and perhaps all the directors aren't going to get behind this for this year, but maybe we can consider it for next year. There are more courses that we directors could take. We could make ourselves take, we could put them on the list of requirements. Chief Sailors of El Cerrito Fire gave me a list of local, local elected officials ICS requirements and guidance. And there are some good courses on there, Introduction to the Incident Command System, the National Incident Management Systems. I think it might be good to require directors and general manager to take that course.
I've taken it.
Very good.
And I would not recommend it for directors. It's really, it's really directed toward operations and grants.
So, I mean, one of the actions that he suggests on here is basically if there's a local emergency, weather event, mass killing, landslide, et cetera, that we check in with the fire chief and general manager, or maybe the police chief and general manager, would you say that's enough, that we directors plan to do that if, if we hear, I mean, if there's an emergency?
Wearing your director's hat, if there's an emergency, you're going to be serving as directors and having to make some possible difficult decisions. If you want to volunteer in addition to that, that would go along with what we talked about this afternoon with a plan. And then if we take the plan and we go with a volunteer organization, that would be something, and that's what I dealt with in Stallion, a number of my directors were also volunteers in the CERT program. But two separate functions, two different hats that you're wearing.
Okay, so you don't really suggest more courses. There's also the one that they mentioned, I guess it was in the Contra Costa County, Volume One of the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the California State Training Course on Earthquakes. Do you think we should, earthquake, earthquake class, do you think we should take that?
I, that's fine if you're interested in not, I don't recommend you taking it as a director. If you're interested, again, in, in becoming more knowledgeable about volunteer and evacuations and safety protocols, then yeah.
Anything else?
As I said earlier today, I really feel that this community should be having annual evacuation drills for every area. I feel that that would be a great way to prepare our citizens and keep them thinking about, you know, how they're going to be safe in a wildfire. And maybe we're not ready to do that, but it deserves to be mentioned.
I, I agree it deserves to be mentioned. I agree that we need to look at the, down the road at doing that. I, I think that I'm hope, I don't think, I hope that based on our discussion this afternoon, some of that will be flushed out in us taking action and getting to that point. But I will tell you that to do those types of drills takes a great deal of labor, time, and effort, and we're not there yet.
Well, I definitely hear you, but let's try to get there. And, and the other thing that I mentioned this afternoon is just my concern that our streets are too narrow and parked up for fire trucks to pass. And that is an issue for emergency preparedness that ought to be investigated.
Don't disagree with you, but I don't know how you solve the problem with infrastructure.
Well, and it's also sort of outside the, the issue here of the mitigation plan. And I, but your point is well taken. Yes. Anyone else have any comments? Anyone from the audience have any comments? Anyone online have any comments? Having seen none? Okay, well, again, if you read it over and you have any comments, anything you want to add, either send a, an email to David, or you can go to the county website and fill out their forms that'll go directly to us. So with that, I think we can move on. The Kensington Park Assessment District Levy?
Yeah, so this is really administrative work that we do each year in order to properly meet the guidelines of seeing this assessment placed on the property tax rolls. So what we ask the board to do is make a motion, a second, and a vote for each of the individual resolutions, which then we, Lanell gets the signatures, finishes it off, we send it to NBS, they send all the assessment information along with the approved resolutions to the county.
Any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Would we go to the levy? This is an annual event.
Okay, I'll do the first one. Let's try to.
Well, let me, let me find out if anyone out there, and the ether has any comment, doesn't appear to be. So, okay.
I move that we approve the recommendations related to the approval of the Annual Kensington Park Assessment District Levy and adopt Resolution Number 2024-02, initiating proceedings for the levying and collection of assessments for the Kensington Park Assessment District for fiscal year 2024-25.
Okay.
Second.
Call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. I hear a motion on the second resolution.
A second to the motion?
Any comments? Okay, call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. On the next resolution, do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'd like to make a motion that the board adopt Resolution Number 2024-04, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Kensington Police Protection and Community Services District, declaring the district's intention to levy and collect assessment for the Kensington Park Assessment District for fiscal year 2024-25.
Second.
Call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving along, we have the KCC annual payment. David?
Yeah, I, I think it's pretty clear. When the negotiations took place, and it made a lot of sense, there was a little kicker in there for CPI, cost of living. And so as we enter, go into the second year, as you saw, the CPI was 2.4. We're going to be consistent here on down the, the road, and looking at that 12-month every year. And so this year, the recommendation is to increase their rate from 29,000 to $29,696.
Any questions about that?
No, sounds good.
Anyone in the audience have any? Come on up, come on up. Why don't you?
Yeah, but people need to.
We want you on tape.
On tape. Could you please give some context on this? Why is the KCC paying the district this fee? And what's it, what's it about?
We, we put in the board packet, do you, do you have electronic, the ability to look at the board packets electronically? Okay, well, there's a hard copy here. We put the contract, the district has an agreement with KCC. They're the ones that run all the park programs here, and they use this building to some degree, and they use the rec building exclusively. And in conjunction with the contract, there's a fee that they pay that covers a lot of those operating expenses that we bear.
Any other comments? Anyone online? Apparently not. Okay, so we, I need an approval? I'm sorry?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve to increase the annual payment KCC makes to the district from 29,000 per year to 29,696 per year, as authorized in 2.2 of the contract.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Mr. President, Agenda Item Number 12 is to be removed. The party that we would need to be part of this grant, they said they cannot do it this year, and they'll look at addressing it next.
Okay. Please.
Sorry, I, I'm noticing that we have Laura Callen from Good Guess Kensington here. So maybe just, can she speak for a brief second on, on, on this, since it was on agenda?
Please do it. And I, I just want to recognize that we did attend last year a session, was it this year?
The Fall Training?
Time goes by so quickly. And it was a very good session. I appreciated you putting it on. So, please.
Good evening, and thank you for your service. I've never been to a board meeting, so.
And now you know why.
I don't know how many more I'll attend, but I really deeply appreciate that you do this work for our community. Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to share, first of all, just quickly for the folks who are on Zoom or anyone who's here that doesn't know who Good Guess Kensington is. So I am a member of Good Guess Kensington. We're a group of Kensington residents who are supporting our town to be in right relationship with the indigenous people of this place, who are called Lashawn Nation. And we've been doing that work for about three years now. And we were told about a grant opportunity, initially through David Oranda, which would allow Good Guess Kensington, KPPCSD, and Sagorate Land Trust to collaborate on developing an arts project for Kensington Park. And the vision for that would be developed through the grant itself, which would have been a planning grant. Sagorate Land Trust is a nonprofit entity that collaborates with the Lashawn Nation to support a lot of their sovereignty work and their rematriation work. So we, Good Guess Kensington, have a direct relationship with Sagorate Land Trust, and we brought this grant opportunity to them. We were really hopeful that we could pull it off in the short amount of time that we had. The grant application would have been due June 14th. So we were hopeful, but Lashawn Nation does not have capacity to work with us on the application by the 14th of June. But they did let us know that they're very excited about this type of project. And if there's a way to bring this idea back to them when there's more time to work on it, they would be really open to that. So that's really exciting news. And in the board packet, you can see, again, just brief overview of what the grant is about and some initial ideas. And for us at Good Guess Kensington, the, there's certainly the excitement of creating something tangible, right, that would be in the park for this community, that would honor the indigenous people, that would beautify our park. But it's also would give us an opportunity to deepen our relationships with Lashawn Nation by actually working on this grant, and to do a lot of learning together and to involve potentially other groups like Hilltop Students or KSEP classes. So there's So there's just a lot that could be done through this kind of a grant and hopefully we will be able to come back to you with a different kind of, well, when the next grant cycle comes around, there's a grant cycle that will come back around in about a year. So if, if I may, there's another member of Good Guess Kensington who is on Zoom, Susanna Marshland, and I just, because she's also been here. And I just want to recognize her and ask Susanna if you want to say anything.
Let her, let her on. You see her? Okay.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Lovely, thanks. I want to second what Laura said about appreciating the work you do for our community. While it seems that we don't have quite enough time and capacity to pursue this round of the grant, I personally am really excited about the idea of pursuing the next round. And if we do have the opportunity to continue conversations, to develop a project that would be appealing for this community and engage in some of the community engagement process that is required part of the grant, then I think there's a very strong possibility we could apply for an implementation grant next year. So I look forward to some continued conversations, whether it's with this whole group or with individual directors, depending on their interest. I think we could make something really beautiful for our community and really educational. And I, I know that we would be excited to be part of that as, as long as everyone's capacity permits. Thanks very much.
I just want to thank Good Guess Kensington and for jumping on this idea and being willing to work on it. I think it's a fantastic opportunity. I would be thrilled if Kensington did this. And as you move forward, I personally would love to be in conversations with you. And if you do develop some kind of a budget, I'm in the philanthropic sector and so I know of other funding sources from private foundations that could be a really great resource specifically on this. So I'd love to talk.
Great.
Good, Cass?
Thank you so much for working on this. As I sit here, I'm thinking about how great it would be if somehow the children at KSEP, perhaps, since we are, you know, directly involved with, you know, KCC and KSEP, could somehow participate in an activity that created a work of art that would be permanent in our park or some sort of structure that might involve ritual or, you know, something, you know, beautiful and historic that they would learn from. And, you know, children really love to learn by doing. So just hoping that kind of thing could be involved.
So yeah.
I would like to encourage you to even broaden that and think about speaking with the Kensington Education Foundation at the beginning of the next school year because the KEF actually funds the art program at the Hilltop School. Unfortunately, I don't know the art teacher anymore. She's retired and they have a new one, I believe. But the Kensington Education Foundation could introduce you to the art teacher. The art teacher could have every one of her classes create, you know, drawings and ideas based on the parameters. And of course, with October having Indigenous People Day, there's a great tie-in and I don't think it's too soon to start really next fall so that we are in, are in good shape by, or even now. And I, I'm also interested in having further discussions if you'd like.
Might be useful actually to have one or two board members liaison with your group and start the preparation and thinking for next year's grant program because it'll come up fast and you want to be prepared.
Yeah, once we got over our disappointment, we realized that actually this, it is going to be here very quickly and perhaps it will actually be even better to have more time to prepare. So just to say, we're also completely in agreement that we're going to be looking for ways to involve our students, children, families, you know, even those who are not at Hilltop in as many ways as possible. So thank you for giving us a few minutes. And yeah, if, if anybody, yeah, we're still getting to know how this works, like us working with the board. So if there are people who identify themselves as wanting to be liaisons with us or to be the folks who directly work with us, that would be super helpful.
Sure.
Just quickly, I also wanted to thank Good Guess Kensington. This is, you know, this will ultimately be, you know, if it goes through, you know, a big time commitment on your organization's part, we'd really appreciate your investment and partnering and leadership on this. And I just, and also want to thank David Aranda for flagging this. I mean, this is, you know, you know, thank you because we all would have missed it. And I also want to emphasize that, you know, the, you know, part of the reason for the delay is that, you know, it's so important to have Sagorate involved and I really appreciate the judgment of Good Guess Kensington to, you know, do this the right way and, and to make sure that we're being very appropriate and sensitive and, and, you know, and proceeding on that basis. And I, I don't know how closely everyone is following the news, but Sagorate has had some major accomplishments, victories lately with the Kensington, with the Berkeley Landback deal on Fourth Street. And it's just really amazing that they have interest in our little community and, and partnering with us in some way. So fingers crossed that all goes through and again, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I think maybe next meeting or so, we can between the board members, see if one or two of you want to participate as liaisons with your group.
Great.
Okay, thank you again for coming.
Yep.
Moving on to the paying off of the Ford vehicle, Ford Motor Company?
Basically what I'm looking for is authority at an appropriate time to possibly pay off the one vehicle that we're paying an 8% interest rate on. I thought it would have been this fiscal year that I would want to do it. Unfortunately, grant money that we are expecting from the state isn't going to come until next fiscal year, even though we have the expenses this fiscal year. So if the, if the board is comfortable with just giving me the authority at the appropriate time, if there is an appropriate time, I'm not going to break the bank, so to speak, just to pay off a vehicle. But if we see that opportunity to reduce, it's almost $1,000 a month we're paying. That, that's what I'm looking for.
Any comments? I think, personally, I think we ought to give you the authority now so that you can jump on it when, when it's appropriate, so. Anyone in the audience have any comments with that we got? Anyone online? Okay, well.
I can make a motion.
If you'd like.
I move that we give the general manager authority to pay off the Ford Motor Company leased vehicle at a cost not to exceed $41,000 based on the fiscal year ending in the positive and/or next year, if that is more fiscally appropriate.
Fair enough. Any second? All right. Call the roll, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Hey, we have chief's monthly report. Hope you're hanging in there with the allergies.
Good evening, members of the board, General Manager Aranda, members of the public. I'll be brief, it's been a long day for all of us in a meeting and it's getting late for patrol operations. I would just like to point out a couple of things. There were 94 traffic enforcement stops made last month, which is a product of the gentleman you saw over there today. They're young and they want to go out and do a lot of work. We're keeping an eye on that. To touch on the hiring of the 10th officer, it's more appropriate to do that in January. And that is because we need time to focus on those officers and make sure that there's attention to detail with younger officers. It's very important, in my opinion. I'll move on to administration. The maintenance team successfully executed repairs on the bus stop bench at Colusa Circle. Throughout the month, I participated in various meetings, including the weekly budget sessions with the administrative team, County Chiefs Assembly in Martinez, the Calpers Audit Discussions and a session addressing public safety concerns raised by a citizen. I have an update on flock cameras. Three of them went in today. Amazing how the phones work here. Brian is Sergeant Landy's hitting, giving me the information. So three flock cameras were successfully installed today. The Colusa and Oak View camera is awaiting a site inspection. Southbound Arlington and Amherst is awaiting internal approval to be installed instead of Berkeley's camera. There's a story behind that, but everything is moving faster than we expected. I mentioned flock cameras are slated for installation in May. They'll probably be done this week. Progression of the TASER program entails the adoption of an industry standard policy for Lexipol, subsequent training and compliance verification among staff. Anticipated TASER delivery tentatively scheduled for late August, possibly October. Comprehensive training on usage and reporting protocols and eventual deployment later this year are all in the works. Just to piggyback on the grant, we're pretty confident that the additional money will be received in July. Unfortunately, we pushed for June, they, they couldn't do it. Sergeant Nath manages all aspects of our traffic equipment grant programs, including those funded by OTS and CHP. The patrol car has been fully outfitted and is poised for imminent deployment into the field. Four newly recruited police officers set to be formally sworn in. We've had that today. And Sergeant Nath is organizing community engagement events throughout the summer to introduce the new officers to the public. The two scheduled events we have at the moment are Coffee with a Cop this Wednesday, May 15th at 9:00 AM. Having the, the agenda to be determined, Semi-Freddy's down at Colusa Circle will be the location. A Pizza with Police will be on Wednesday, June 15th, 12 o'clock at Benchmark Pizzeria. Two additional gatherings are in the pipeline with announcements coming on the Police Department's website and social media platforms. I'm a little bit more optimistic on the payroll implementation project. I think it'll be completed by the end of May. That is all I have. Any questions you might have?
I do have a question. I was, I didn't understand and you can explain why the maintenance team was doing repairs. And what do you mean by the police maintenance team on Colusa Circle?
I didn't mention the name Fernando Herrera. I just identified him as the maintenance team. I got a phone call when Mr. Aranda was away. A citizen said, hey, this bench has collapsed. Brandon went down, was that?
No, but I was going to ask the same question because the gentleman, I forget his name, I believe he's a Kensington resident, runs his advertising business off those benches and it's his responsibility to fix them. I, I appreciate that it was fixed, so promptly and I saw its condition, was horrified and thank you all for dealing with it. But we should also be in contact because it's, they're often in public spaces and I, I know that because of the little park I had to go through. And anyhow, appreciate that, but it is technically his responsibility.
We could certainly send him the bill.
Yeah.
If, if there was a way that I could identify whose responsibility the bus stop was, I would have done that. I contacted AC Transit and they said, not ours. I did some research on park benches. Berkeley's dealing with something similar right now and they're getting donations to put in park benches because the bus companies aren't responsible for doing it. So we couldn't determine at the time, but I felt it was necessary to fix the collapsed bench.
Yeah.
I like the idea of sending the bill personally.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think this, I, I can find the contact of the gentleman whose business it is and share it with you just because I have, I think I can find the contact of the person who is, it's his business to maintain those benches. So, but thank you, appreciate the fix.
I assume his advertisement is still on what's left of the bench, so that should be easy to contact him.
I just want to make sure I heard you correctly at the beginning, the, the increase in traffic stops was a pretty big jump. That's due to the new officers. Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't something.
No, that's, that's, that's typical, hire new police officers and they want to get out there and be police officers. So it is critical that our supervisors train them to be Kensington police officers. I don't know if that makes sense, but you see these little nuggets of information here. 94 traffic stops is quite an increase from the previous month. It's a lot for a small community as, like ours.
So, I was driving at about 9:00 PM about a month ago along the Arlington and then going to take turn, go down to my house and a police car pulled in right behind me from the gas station. And there definitely was a gung-honess about it. And it was maybe a little too gung-ho, but I think they were trying to get up close to read my plates and send in my info. I don't know, or maybe I just have a lot of bumper stickers, which I do. But anyway, maybe, yeah, maybe tiny bit less gung-ho would be good or I don't know. That's up to you. And a few more questions. So you're saying, you're trying to get up to a total of 10 officers, including yourself. We're currently at nine, including yourself.
Yes.
And you're saying, let's hold off till January to hire that 10th because, you know, getting these guys steady, steady on their feet now makes.
We have one, we have one sergeant with 18 months' experience, another sergeant with just over three years' experience and an entire team of police officers with less than two years' experience.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's important to pay attention to the details rather than just fill the tank up and say we're full staff.
I agree, I agree.
It's important, very important, so.
With those, with the nine total, can we increase the nighttime patrol to two yet?
No.
Not yet.
No.
That's what I wanted to know.
Can I clarify on that? We only have eight right now, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Eight total?
Yes.
So I want to make sure that we understand how many officers we have on the force right now. But as the chief, as the chief has said, he has a sergeant at the county level who he wants to bring on and then he would also fill the lieutenant's position, if I'm correct.
Correct.
So, but the lieutenant's position is going to be Lieutenant Nath?
Yes. That's the, that's the tentative program. Correct. Yes, that's the tentative plan.
And there would be someone entering at the officer level who you already have your eye on, who's on the Sheriff's Department?
He's a sergeant with the Contra Costa County Sheriff's Department.
And you would bring him on in January?
I would bring him on July 1st.
Okay, that's what I'm missing. So then the additional one will come in January. Okay, good. And my last question is a little flippant. Is the coffee and the pizza free for people who come?
Yes, we've worked something out with Benchmark Pizza and we've worked something out with Semi-Freddy's and that both, both of them love it. They wish we would have started this sooner. We do have a community line item budget set aside. It's a small amount, but it's for things just like this. So we don't want them to go broke, so we're making deals with them. We'll pick up this, you pick up that, and they're very generous. Both businesses are very generous.
Well, this is a great kind of outreach and, you know, having events, having newsletters, things online, good idea. You'll be posting it on Nextdoor or do you want me to post it on Nextdoor?
We'll handle it. Before I forget, I did want to point out, I made a mention here, Volunteer Mike Logan's active involvement in the Town of Danville Citizen Academy concluded yesterday. I attended his graduation underscores his invaluable service to both the community and the police department. Spending seven weeks, the academy curriculum encompasses an array of pertinent subjects, including patrol procedures, traffic enforcement, investigations and crime prevention. His unwavering dedication epitomizes his steadfast commitment to community welfare and public safety. The chief of Danville commented on Mike's participation and mentioned that when I was there last night, he said, Mike's one of our big participants. So very active and he couldn't wait to show me the, his. he couldn't wait to show me the his, uh, target skills in his grouping. He said, I think he was, he was looking for employment, I think, but congratulations.
Sylvia, have a question.
Just one quick thing. I'm not sure if this number is correct, but, uh, I I thought I heard somewhere that six thousand cars take the Arlington every day. So honestly, with the the ninety four, I I know there are many citizens here who are happy to see that increased enforcement. And, you know, it is, it is not for us to say what and how to do it, uh, because that's a mistake. And Kensingtonians, as much as everyone else, need to just, you know, follow the rules. Should they be the ones getting the tickets? But with six thousand people or six thousand cars on that road every day, you know, it's it's great to have them out there.
I would just say that it's not only the Arlington. Purdue is a wonderful thoroughfare on to twenty four, down to Berkeley. So I appreciate the officers being there. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Any questions from the audience? Any questions online? I don't see any hands online.
Okay. The last thing I would offer, I forgot to mention, I had a conversation this morning with, uh, Chief John Geisberger of Albany. Our dispatch contract is due July first. John and I are going to move it forward quickly. You'll see a document. The general manager will have a document in June. Renewing that contract with the Albany Police Department, very satisfied with their product.
Let me ask a quick question on that regard. Uh, I know you had an article in, uh, the Outlook about nine one one versus, uh, the ten digit number, uh, and you mentioned that there may be some times when the nine one one may not work. Uh, what's your advice with regard to to, um?
Wouldn't say the nine one one wouldn't work. Director Aquino Fike and I just experienced this out front. Sometimes the cell service doesn't work up here. So if you had a landline and dialed the non-emergency number, that that would be a last resort. But residents, be clear, if you have an emergency, dial nine one one.
Right, but if you can't get through because of just the reason you've said, then the the regular, the number that we have for dispatch, I guess.
Correct.
Would be the number to to call.
Correct.
So, okay.
I just quickly want to ask you about that nine one one plus service. Have you heard about that before? And do you think it's a a good?
I have too much background on that.
Would you like me to send you the web?
Sure.
Okay, I'll send you.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, you're on for the last item.
Happy to answer any questions. You saw that I put as an attachment to my GM report, a little summary of what's gone on in the parks over this fiscal year to date.
Sylvia.
Um, I would say that, uh, you know, one thing to keep in mind, and this is not obviously not to be expended by the end of the fiscal year or not, but kind of keeping with our discussion this afternoon and some of what, um, Director Goff was saying about the need for some, you know, professional advice. This may predate you, but I can't quite remember, uh, the walkthroughs of the park regarding the conditions of the trees. And even though the large ones were taken down, there were definitely other trees that were stressed. It was recommended that we, uh, think about trimming some of the trees over the place structure because that type of tree tends to drop limbs. And so that's just something else in the litany of the regular stuff that we might want to revisit, since there is money in the budget, um, even if it's next fiscal year, um.
Yeah, Director Goff has pointed that out to me too.
Any other questions? Anyone in the audience have a question? Anyone online? Okay, well, uh, with that, I guess we can close off the meeting. Oh, you have a question?
I have a director comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, of course.
I'm going to make it super brief. If there's anybody listening online to any of these meetings and you don't understand an item or you need the back history on an issue, send me an email. My email is on the KPPCSD website. And I will call you or, you know, get together for coffee and explain what's going on because I know it can be super confusing. There's all this history. We try to go fast. And, you know, you then you're discouraged and you're like, I don't, I'm not going to come to these meetings. I don't even know what's going on. Please, uh, don't give up. You can reach out and we'll tell you all about it. We want people to volunteer and we want people to be engaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Cass. Any other director comments? Um, I will only add that I thought our workshop went very well today and, uh, pleased with the outcome. I hope everyone else is. With that, I'll close the meeting. The next meeting of the Kensington Police Protection and Community Service District Board will be actually six o'clock on the thirteenth of June for a essentially a special meeting on the budget. And then public hearing on the budget, and then the regular meeting will be at seven. So with that, I will close the meeting. Have a nice evening. And we did it under nine o'clock.